Like, let's go.
Oh, no. We had to christen it tonight. Might have been the night to christen. Okay. Got it.
Mr. Chair, I believe we have a quorum.
May I call a meeting to order? Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Morondo? Roll call of the members of the commission?
Right. Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Commissioner McGee?
Here.
Commissioner Morondo?
Here.
Commissioner Reland?
Here.
Commissioner Capin?
Here.
Chair Cloud? Absent.
Yes. Forgive my newness, do we need a motion to approve the agenda? I hear a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Comments? All in favor, say aye. Oh, don't mind me, that's the former lieutenant governor and me.
I hear you.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Smith? I know what you know. All right, Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Capin? Motion has been approved.
It's approved. Can I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? We don't have approval. Approval of the minutes of the February 6th meeting? Do we have here a motion?
I believe we have to do case by case, or...
This is just the minutes of the meeting.
A motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Can I hear a roll call, please?
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Capin? Vice Chair, the motion is passed.
Then we will move on to approval of findings and conclusions by the staff. First case, 2024-7909?
That's a motion by the... You motion to, uh, to accept...
We start with the motion and then the presentation.
There's no, there's no presentation for findings. The findings are nothing more than a snapshot of the previous meeting, so you're just approving the findings based on your own.
And can I hear a motion to approve case 2024-7909?
Motion to approve?
Staff, is there any corrections or anything like that that we should know of to these findings?
Thermowaves.
Thank you very much.
The way I am used to doing this is that we, uh, once we have the motion, we can then discuss anything we want to discuss. But maybe that's backwards from the way you're...
Yeah, we would, we would ask staff if there's any corrections, and then the motioner would say the case.
Okay. Of no corrections. And I hear the roll call, please?
I think I need a second, I have Sasha.
Second.
Okay. All right, Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Capin?
Yes.
Vice Chair, the motion is passed.
Appropriate to ask for case 2024-7998. Are there any corrections?
No, Mr. Chair.
A motion to approve?
Motion to approve, approve case 2024-7998. As Prado's preliminary subdivision plat.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Capin?
Yes.
Vice Chair, the motion is passed.
Is there any consent agenda?
Nothing, no consent agenda today.
And old business?
There's no old business.
New business, and do we proceed with a motion and then the presentation?
Presentation, motion, and then an action.
Okay.
Or presentation, uh, public, public comments, close the public hearing, then request discussion, then a motion, then an action.
Good evening, commissioners. I will be presenting case 2022-6013, Prado, formerly Caja de Oro, Phase 2, Final Subdivision Plat. The agent is NM Land Solutions. The applicant is Polte Homes, New Mexico. And the case planner is Claudia Cath. So, this, this case may be familiar to some of you, and for some of you, it may be new. So, just to refresh, I'm going to read through part of the case caption. So, as noted, the agent and the applicant requests approval of a final subdivision plat for Phase 2 of the Caja de Oro phased subdivision consisting of 44 single-family homes for a total of 80 homes for phases 1 and 2 combined. The property is approximately nine acres of land, of the full 16 acres for both phases. It is located north of Caja de Oro, Grant Road, and east of the New Mexico 599 Frontage Road. As some of you may know, this case has been around for quite a while, and there are actually six of them. So, we're in the home stretch with approval. We're asking for approval of the final subdivision plat for Phase 2. The applicant has complied with holding ENNs, and in fact, they have had two of them in May 2021 and August 21. And the second one was held due to the increase in the number of dwellings from 80 at the first meeting to 88 at the second meeting. Subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant reduced the number of units from 88 back to 80 in response to Planning Commission comments. So, just to go over the vicinity, this is the location of the site. And then this is a larger blow-up. So, you can see the 599 freeway here. This is the Alameda Frontage Road. This is Caja de Oro. This is the Aqua Friar Fire Station. And this is residential. And South Meadows Road is down here. And adjacent zoning, you can see the brown here, the darker brown. This is zoned R10. This is C2 Commercial. And R21 here, this is the site. And again, Caja de Oro, Santa Fe River. And, whoops. To, um, this is the entire Caja de Oro subdivision phase. This is Caja de Oro Road here. This is the Alameda Frontage Road, 599 freeway. This is Phase 1. And what we're talking about tonight is Phase 2. So, sorry, this is Phase 2, but it's tipped. This is Caja de Oro Road here, Phase 1 here. And so, this is 44 homes. As I mentioned, zoned R10. There, um, there are 34 units that are market rate, and 10 will be affordable. And the Planning Commission approved Phase 1 and the development, final development plan on December 1st, 2022. So, this next slide is about parking. Each dwelling unit will have two off-street parking spaces. And then Phase 2 will have 43 on-street parking spaces, 90-degree. And there will, two of those will be accessible. Then regarding traffic, Caja de Oro again is here. Um, there's, there will be, they, both phases share an entry off of Caja de Oro. So, this, for Phase 2, the entry will be here. For Phase 1, it'll be here. And this, the road here will be, be, oh, Campo del Norte. And the Loop Road for Phase 1 will be Campo del Sur Loop. So, for open space, the applicant has submitted, the applicant has submitted the, according to ordinance 14-7.5 for open space standard, the Planning Commission approved water harvesting in open space. And this design is same as preliminary and is consistent with the development plan in Phase 1. So, for utilities, this, um, so the wet utilities are coming from approximately where the Aqua Friar Fire Station is located and will be run along Caja de Oro, Grant Road, and then brought into the subdivision. And that would include gas, electric, and cable. The wet utilities, um, so 12-inch water main and an 8-inch sewer main will be coming from South Meadows to Caja de Oro and then into the subdivision. When, and then once they're in the subdivision, so this is Caja de Oro Road, um, the utilities will basically run, um, on the, under the Loop Road and then stub into each of the units. And there are two fire hydrants. And then for terrain management, this is Phase 2 here. And the site generally slopes north to south, and it's less than 5%. The terrain management, uh, DRT, uh, has reviewed the site and, um, has noted comments in the conditions of approval and technical corrections. Also, I should note that, um, we have received archaeological clearance. The site has been cleared by Ron Winters, and a letter has been included in Attachment B. And the site is suitable for development. So, the landscape, um, plan, the landscape, uh, DRT has approved the projects for landscape and irrigation. And any comments are attached in Attachment B. And then lastly, to conclude, these are some photos that I took on site. So, this, number 1, is on Caja de Oro, Grant Road. So, Phase 1 is to the right, and Phase 2 is to the left. And picture 2 is looking at, um, the Phase 1, where grading has started. And picture 3 is looking at the cemetery that's 100 feet away from the subdivision. And photo number 4 is looking up Camino Cementario. And then, um, this is, number 6 is looking down Caja de Oro, Grant Road, the other way towards the 599. This is, uh, Phase 2 in the foreground, Phase 1 in the background. And Caja, it's hard to see, but Caja de Oro is going right through there. This is another photo, same. And then this is looking into Phase 2. So, staff recommends approval for this final subdivision plat with the conditions of approval and technical work corrections listed in Attachments A and B of this report. One motion will be required in this case to approve or deny the final subdivision plat, case 2022-613, subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections recommended by staff.
To a public... We have any questions from the commission first, and then move to a public presentation?
Mr. Chair goes, uh, from here on, we ask the applicant to make their presentation. So, clarifying questions from the committee, if they choose to do it now, or they can wait till afterwards.
So, when I was reviewing this case, obviously, this has been going on. Thank you guys for your patience. The, in the DRT report, it was talking about the school, Santa Fe Public Schools. That was from 2001, that they could accommodate the increase in population. Do we have any update on that from the Santa Fe Public Schools, since we have seen an increase in residents in that neighborhood? Or are we all...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Reland, the existing letter from the public schools will still exist for the file and for this particular project, uh, since it's still ongoing. And it's continuing on that bubble of, of review, if you will. So, there is no need to send it back out to the schools.
Are there other questions? We proceed with the presentation by the applicant.
Please, uh, raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Nathan Monzanades with New Mexico Land Solutions, located at 915 Mercer Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Uh, Mr. Chair, he's right though.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Um, I'd like to thank staff, thank Claudia. She was a very big help in getting this over the finish line. Um, believe it or not, I think we've worked with three or four different city staff members since this started back in '21. They've all been great. Um, I do have a presentation ready, but Claudia was pretty thorough in hers, and I don't want to be too repetitive. Um, my team and I are here to field any questions you may have. And I just want to say thank you to staff once again.
Then, we proceed to public, okay. Are there any members, uh, in the room? Or, public in the room? Is there anyone on...
I don't, I don't see any hands up on Zoom right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for the app?
Um, I just have one question, and I may be missing it. Uh, is there bike parking provided? Bicycle parking?
Um, Madam, Commissioner Chair Smith, Madam McGee, Commissioner McGee. Um, you know, I don't believe there is designated bike parking. We do have a lot of, um, off-street, um, parking to accommodate guests in the pocket park and park areas in both phases. Um, but no, I don't believe that was a requirement, uh, because it's not a multifamily project.
Yeah, I think you were, you were getting there. Sure, McGee. So, yeah, because this is a subdivision, we don't have a requirement for bike parking. But if, you know, the commission wanted to, you know, add a condition that they add bike parking, you know, to the facility, that would be amenable. But, you know, that would be within your...
Madam, Mr. Chair, Commissioner McGee, to add to that, typically, most people who are going to live in the subdivision are going to have a spot for their own bike in their own house or in the garage. So, it's not something that is a commonplace in subdivisions.
We can head on board and think about it. Are there other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, you have to close the public hearing.
Oh. Do we have to vote?
No, you just...
I declare the public hearing closed?
Public comment. Sorry, not the public hearing, the public comment. That was my fault, sorry.
Oh, no. And then it's time for questions or comments from the commission? Yes.
Well, maybe for staff. Um, since this was approved such a long time ago, I know they mentioned there were no changes to the landscaping. Were there any other changes of significance to any of the plan between 2022 and now? That we should know about from the preliminary?
No, it was, um, consistent with the preliminary.
But I just wanted to say, um, my second question, maybe, is, well, um, I was surprised that there's no sidewalks down to Romero Park from these projects. Um, and wondered if that came up earlier in this discussion that wasn't privy to, and it's right there. And that road has seemingly plenty of space on the side of it. And I'm curious why, I mean, it's kind of in a desert there of roads, and then we have this amazing public park. And so, I was wondering if there had ever been a discussion about, uh, a sidewalk heading from these phases down there?
Uh, I'd like to direct that question to the applicant.
Commissioner Captain, that's a, if you see the plan, we're actually building to the edge of our property line, a sidewalk along Caja de Oro Road. And there was, in the very beginning, there was some discussion between, uh, this borders the jurisdiction of Santa Fe County. And, um, you know, that section may actually be a responsibility of Santa Fe County, because it's not within the city limits. And to do that off-site improvement in the county's jurisdiction could problematic.
Getting used to the, um, looking at these online, I did not see sidewalk drawings.
I could pull that up if you'd like on the development plan.
Yeah, and then maybe, um, I don't know if staff could chime in about this with the difference between this being coming through city but next to county, and how something like that works? Because it seems like a real missed opportunity.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, Member Captain, um, I would have to agree with, with the applicant at this point. It would be a negotiative issue between the applicant and the county based on a condition of approval. If the county chose not to do it, then the sidewalks still wouldn't get put in place, because they wouldn't get permission from that easement in order to achieve their goals. So, uh, the other issue is that if it wasn't discussed at the previous meetings, they probably didn't look at the easements necessary to achieve those goals for that road running along that. Because I have not seen that, any easements for that right-of-way to that park, although I think that your comment is a good one. I don't know the answers to many of those questions.
No.
There, there was not one put in place, no.
And there was, it just never came up in analysis around this? I mean, is this part of...
I don't think so.
Yeah, um, Commissioner Capin? I will just, you know, we do, I, I wasn't involved in the preliminary, uh, discussions on this one, but we do generally have those conversations when we look at a subdivision or a development plan and their, their adjacency or proximity to, you know, amenities that, and we have, um, required off-site improvements, you know, to connect, you know, or improve connections for pedestrian or bicycle access. Or we've certainly recommended that in the past. Um, so I don't know if this was just because it was a jurisdictional conflict where it wasn't really kind of contemplated. Um, remember, we had one, um, it was also, yeah, another case from, um, Ms. Dalton. And it was, we were, we were hoping that they could make a connection through an MDOT right-of-way. And I'm not sure whatever came of that, but that was another, you know, one we did do in the past where we said, hey, you know, just go try and make this connection, because it's right there and it's a great amenity. And, um, but I'm not sure, you know, if that, where that one is. So, I think we do, we do look at those off-site improvements, um, generally through when we do our transportation, um, impact assessments and our transportation review with our, uh, partners at the Public Works and partners at the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So, if we have connections that are planned, we try to, you know, make those happen if we can. You know, as Nate mentioned as well, certainly, uh, there should be, and I think he's bringing it up now. There's, um, we generally do require sidewalks to be made, you know, on their property. So, and that's where you kind of get those sidewalks to know where. Where, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna make it to their end of their property line and then, and then stop there and hope, you know, that the, the connection gets made sometime in the future, um, which we know doesn't always happen.
Yeah, this one seems because it kind of hops over a firehouse. Discussion a little bit. Um, it's not like a developer is going to come in there and put that in front of our city firehouse. So, we have this great park, and we have this family housing coming in. And it feels like, is there any move here to talk about this? Or is this a really no-go zone, goes into county?
Okay. But, yeah, or, I know, I'm sorry, and, uh, I know Nate, you work a lot with the county too, so.
Do you want to say, I understand we're kind of at the end of the road here? So, I'm not trying to, you know, I just wanted to talk about this a little, maybe even for future projects, as we develop these big areas out there that are like, we, that this is thought about to connect these parks and amenities for people.
Point of, point of, uh, information, isn't the fire station itself a county fire station? Point of, point of uh information, isn't the fire station itself a county fire station?
Claudia, so um, as Maggie was mentioning, we did run into this issue um in a city property near the Beckner uh road area, uh, in the Los Solaris um area. And we did uh explore a potential connection with uh NMDOT. And um, you know, we had an attorney involved, a land use attorney, and it actually was flirting with common, I mean, I'm not common, um, anti-dination, anti-donation clauses, where we were trying to have to acquire off-site property that we didn't own and installing um improvements that in essence were outside of our property boundaries. Um, as Maggie said, you know, I think this would ultimately be an initiative between the MPO. Uh, it's a joint venture between county, city, state. Um, it's a great opportunity for sure to make that connection, but it may have to be presented to them. Um, and lobbied. Um, but I'm going to pull up, it's kind of, let me see if I can zoom in here. So um, on the yellow line there, um, all of the yellow represents sidewalks. So there's sidewalks within um the interior of the development and then along Caja del Oro Road as well. There's actually a, we, we ran into this um when we reduced the number of lots. And uh, there was some discussions on walkability, quality of life. And, you know, we actually enhanced this area's walkability tremendously. And there's also a trail, that red line that runs along the perimeter of the development is also a trail there.
The yellow line, am I just, I don't know if it's my eyes, I'm not seeing a yellow line.
That's as far as I could zoom in, it's.
Well, but that's not, that's not the main road right there. That's the middle of the.
That's Caja del Oro right in the middle there?
Yep.
These are the two phases?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, um, Commissioner Captain, yeah, this, both phases are bisected by Caja del Oro.
Yeah, I got that. I did, I just didn't see. See this? It would be up to the MPO and county to talk about connecting in front of the fire station.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
There are other questions or comments? Then may I, your motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Eric, you hear me? Eric, good. Um, I just had a comment um regarding the uh uh possible need for bike racks and single-family. Um, it makes a lot of sense off the bat. Um, just as like, uh, oh, there's a bunch of houses there, maybe they should have collective infrastructure. I, I can just say from my own experience, I looked at it a couple of times um in my own work, and it was not practical because it creates uh essentially localized bike parking is a big um danger for everybody. And if you have it in a remote place in the site, it's kind of hard to pick place, like if you have an office building, it's required, it's right, you need to put it as close to the entrance as possible. People are going to leave them. But when it's a bunch of single-family homes, it's kind of hard to establish, okay, this is where all these bikes should go. Well, if it's not somewhere that's seen, you're actually basically creating that practice. So I, I would, from my own perspective. Very good, Eric. Thanks.
Eric Smith. A question for the applicant. Uh, so these single-family attached properties that we're looking at here, these are going to be similar to the development that you guys have done on Beckner Road?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Reland, yes, that is correct.
One-car garage, two-car garage?
I believe they are two-car garage.
Okay, then yeah, we'll be able to get two cars, two cars in the driveway.
There's, there's a good amount of parking in this.
Okay, I was just wanting to clarify that, that's all. Thank you very much.
No problem.
I'll make a motion to approve case 2022-6013 Caja del Oro subdivision, final subdivision.
I will second.
Mr. Chair, uh, I sure would like to have that part of the motion as condition.
Uh, I make a motion to approve case 2022-6013 Caja del Oro subdivision, final subdivision plat with technical corrections and adjustments from staff.
Second.
Conditions, technical corrections.
Conditions and technical corrections.
Thank you.
Wrong, Dan.
Second.
Right. Right. Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cape?
Yes.
Vice Chair, the motion is passed.
We are, thank you. Good evening. Janice Balatnikoff with the Planning and Land Use Department. This evening, I'll be presenting to you a final serial subdivision plat, which you have seen before as a preliminary serial subdivision plat. Case number is 2024-9585, and the properties, subject properties are located at 4,04200 Beckner Road. The applicant or the agent is Orion West LLC, and Mr. Brian Nenninger of this organization is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is Santa Fe Los Solaris Medical Development LLC, Los Solaris Center LLC, and Los Solaris Village LLC. I'd like to read the case caption into the record, um, because this case does have a different case number than the preliminary serial subdivision plat. Case 2024-9585, 4,04200 Beckner Road, final serial subdivision plat. Orion West LLC, agent for Santa Fe Los Solaris Medical Development LLC, Los Solaris Center LLC, and Los Solaris Village LLC owners requests approval of a final plat to subdivide lots 18A at 29.82 acres and 18B, 18.01 acres of the Los Solaris master plan to create a total of six lots. The parcels are zoned C2, general commercial, and are located within the suburban archaeological review district. To help you get situated here, um, you can see that the subject property is shown with a star. It, uh, both properties back up to I-25, and this is located on Beckner Road near the Cerros exit for I-25. 4,200 is further to the west and 4,000 is further to the east. These are um both included in the Los Solaris master plan from 2018, which I've indicated here. The legal lot of record was established in 2022 with a lot split resulting in 18A and B. And the proposed final serial subdivision plat is highlighted here in orange to show you the full extent of the proposed subdivision. Um, although we will be focusing more on the westerly half as this is a phased subdivision. This is the close-up of that western half. Um, these are the proposed tracts 18B1 through B5 only, highlighted in red here. And the proposal for this subdivision is to divide the two existing lots, 18A and 18B, into a total of six lots for a commercial subdivision. Tract 18B2 at the center of that westerly area I showed you on the last slide was previously developed as Nexus Health Medical Office Building, and that is completely developed at this point. This was approved under development plan 2022-5621. This is a phased project. Um, phase two will include the development of the much larger tract, tract 18A. Of tract 18B, you can see here there's a table of the proposed lots that will result from this subdivision. They range in size from about one acre to about 10 acres. All of the roads that are proposed in this subdivision will remain in private ownership with public access easements and ongoing maintenance agreements to ensure that these are maintained in good repair and passable in all weather conditions. The HOA for the subdivision will be responsible for that ongoing maintenance. Two access points will um exist today and will continue to exist off of Beckner Road. Uh, and the internal roads will be classified as lot access drives. Two new rights-of-way will be built also. These will be 42 feet wide, and they are roughly parallel to the highway. One to the east will provide access to tract 18A of the subdivision, and one to the west will provide access to Los Solaris lots 16, 19 to 26, which is outside the current subdivision. You can see these indicated here on, uh, the first one with the arrow leads outside the subdivision to Los Solaris, Solaris, lots 19 through 26. And the second one being shown here will provide internal circulation to the rest of this proposed subdivision, tract 18A. Here's a close, um, a close-up of one of the internal roads, just to give you an idea of what it'll look like, its road typology. Um, there will be sidewalks on both sides, and um there will be curb and gutter also provided. The applicant satisfied the requirements for early neighborhood notification on November 27th of 2023. And the planning, uh, and for the planning commission initial public hearing, um, signs and, signs were posted and mailers were sent out on October 22nd and 23rd. Signs have, were posted on site on October 23rd of 2024 and are still posted today, March 20th of 2025. I won't go through the whole criteria analysis here as it is largely unchanged from last time. Um, but I did want to note for the record that staff finds that the proposed final plat, subject to the conditions of approval and required technical corrections, satisfies the subdivision criteria one through five of the, of the Land Development Code subsection 14-3.7C. This includes, among other things, infrastructure design and uh development review team um approval. Staff also finds that the proposed final plat, as required by SFCC subjection, subsection 14-3.7B4, uh, does conform substantially to the preliminary plat as it was approved. And I'd like to ask you to refer to attachment A if you have questions or um any information needs about the list of conditions of approval or the technical corrections that were submitted from our development, development review team members. On November 21st of 2024, uh, the planning, excuse me, the planning commission approved, subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections, the proposed preliminary serial subdivision plat to create this six-lot serial subdivision from the two existing parcels. At that hearing, the planning commission also added one condition of approval. This was added as condition number 11, in which uh it was stated dedication statements shall be addressed during the final plat process. And the dedication statements uh can be seen in the conditions of approval specifically, but you saw it in the prior slides where we discussed the um, the maintenance agreement and the ownership status that will remain um for all of the internal roads in this subdivision. So that has been um worked through with the client and their applicant and the applicant. Uh, and it's, it's been settled as it was described to you. That will also be recorded on the face of the plat. So considering this, uh, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission approve case 2024-9585, 4,04200 Beckner Road, final, final serial subdivision plat, subject to the conditions of approval and required technical corrections. Only one motion is required here, um, and, and that's to approve or deny case 2024-9585. I won't read through all that for you. Now, that concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions. Now, that concludes my presentation, I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Brian Nenninger with Orion West, 2213 Brothers Road, Suite 800, Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Mr. Chair is ready to go.
Chair Smith and Planning Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. I also would like to thank Janice and staff for all their hard work to get us to this place and this point. Similar to the last applicant, there's just not a lot here to talk about, so I'm gonna stand for questions. As Janice noted, of course, we've added in one access road to the east that wasn't there before. That's the primary difference, and we've addressed some of the thoughts and concerns about, is this gonna be dedicated? Or will this be private with public access, or how that will be handled? And so we agree with staff on those items and issues. Stand for questions.
I'm, thank you, Chair Smith. I think when we first went through this case, a lot of public, a lot of coffee shop, some other things. Obviously, we're just talking about a plat here as the, your client come up with any ideas of the intentions of the property moving forward?
So I can, I probably mentioned this last time, that 18B5 is slated for an ambulatory surgery center, one story, about 18,000 square feet. The land use director was kind enough to let us submit a, what we call the horizontal applications for utilities, grading and drainage, so that anticipating this recording would happen, we can get that started. As you know, there's some serious medical needs in the community, and, and the land use director has been helping us with that. So that's the one thing that we know of. Now, there's three lots left for this first phase, obviously, we have a large phase to our east. As we talked before, we had to do sort of a test fit or some land use classifications in order for us to look at things like traffic and a few of those things. Honestly, the, the way that works, I would, we've said this before, we don't think that a coffee house would be interested in the site. So just from a marketability, I don't think that was something that would happen. They would probably go further towards the Rios for, for various just business reasons. Would it be large enough to put a Starbucks or something like that on it? Yes. Is that something that's realistic? No. Since then, we've had several discussions with the neighbor, the neighbors. In fact, we had a meeting, a face-to-face meeting last night with the neighborhood. Try to meet with them biannually, and we just keep them updated from time to time with email blasts on what's happening. And they're all satisfied with what is happening to date. And kind of our explanation about what that might be someday seems to satisfy the group. I think the biggest progress we made was with a separate case where with the rezone of adjacent lots 19 through 26, we added uses, even though it's all now uniform C2, we added use restrictions for things that would normally be allowed in C2 that the neighbors did not want to see there. For example, auto body shops, packaged liquor stores, you know, 24-hour restaurants, these types of things. So I'm not sure if that was, it wasn't a straightforward answer, Commissioner Reland, but it was, it's where we're at today.
Thank you. Very clarifying, thank you, Brian. Thanks for getting the community involved, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, yes?
Thanks, Vice Chair Smith, I do not see any hands raised on Zoom tonight.
Mr. Chair, you need to close the public comments.
Vice Chair Smith? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for case 2024-9585 for 4,04200 Beckner Road, serial subdivision plat. I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to staff's conditions and technical correction.
Second.
Right.
I have just one question. In that motion, you, you failed to include the word "final," I don't know if that's a big deal or not.
I could make a friendly amendment to my own motion, that it be a, a final subdivision plat.
Mr. Chair, that'd be serial subdivision plat. Final.
If, in case 2024-9585, 4,04200 Beckner Road, a final serial subdivision plat, I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to staff's comments and technical correction.
Second.
All right, Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Capen? Vice Chair, the motion is passed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have none, I'm not sure.
None tonight. Nope, no, nothing to share tonight, thanks.
No jokes, Maggie?
Oh, I have a, can I get, is this a time to ask a question? I thought, and maybe I missed it, but I thought in February we were supposed to review the final land development code updates. Am I wrong, or did I, did I miss it?
We're, we're working on it. Yeah, okay, thanks, sorry.
Has this been a long day for everyone?
Yeah.
Chair, Steph, I was wondering, as you're able to have folks from the city come in, I would love to have parks here or a presentation and questions regarding and things that we can think about with the update, and also the way that these things work and what's required in parks and what triggers certain requirements, and I have lots of questions about that. So at some point, if someone's available from that, that would be appreciated.
Thank you for that comment, yeah, I was, maybe it's something like, I mean, we have some, like parks, open space, even like MPO trails, all things that.
Yeah, on a light night, like if we have a light night, just to like keep us here, I just, because we're looking at a lot of new stuff like this, I feel like I'm curious about.
That's great.
Like opportunity, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we'll reach out to Melissa McDonald and Eric Gani and see who we can schedule.
I'm so happy to hear from you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Tell her sorry ahead of time.
And would it be appropriate, do we have an idea, given Commissioner McGee's question as to when we will get, do we have any projections to when we'll get that item back on the agenda?
I don't have a set date.
No problem.
Yeah.
Just asking.
Okay. Fair question.
There's a lot going on. Are there other comments or questions from the mission? I hear a motion to adjourn. No need to, that's right. Oh, I haven't had a chair. I was Lieutenant Governor. Yeah, and it was a little, a little less formal than the Santa Fe Planning Commission, I can issue.